Let's call the meeting to order. Please join me in the plejable evening.
Odeon to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
DeYoung.
Here.
DeAnstruck.
Here.
Carlstone.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Sporer.
Here.
And Randorhorst and Ward are asked.
And Mayor. Okay, we would seek a motion for... Can everyone hear me?
Yeah, pull your mic.
I'm cooperating. Yeah, let's use that one. We would honor a motion for approval of the tentative agenda.
So moved.
Sporer.
Motion Carlstone, support Sporer, any discussion? All in favor, vote aye. Opposed, no. Clerk call the roll.
Carlstone.
Here.
Yes.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
DeAnstruck.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
That motion is passed. At this point, Mayor Duward was planning to appoint Alyssa Verandia to serve on the Community Development Committee. Alyssa's background in design, training, and experience in interior design will be an asset for this committee. If approved, Alyssa's term would expire on August 1st, 2025. Do we have support?
Support or so moved.
Support.
Bannister and Sporer, any discussion about Alyssa?
Discussion about Alyssa.
Okay, with all in favor, vote yes. Opposed, no. Clerk call the roll.
DeAnstruck.
Yes.
Sporer.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion carried. At this time, we have the honor of welcoming a new police officer. Mitchell, you can come forward, please. You can repeat after me, please.
Mr.
I am Mitchell Monarchino, is that correct?
Monarchino.
Monarchino, okay.
I, Mitch Monarchino.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do you solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
That I will faithfully and impartially...
And I will faithfully and impartially...
To the best of my abilities...
To my, to the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties...
Discharge all the duties.
Of the office of Police Officer in the City of Pella, County of Marion, State of Iowa.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the office of Police Officer in the City of Pella.
Of the officer of ple...
Officer.
Of police.
Police Officer in the City of Pella. County of Marion.
County of Marion.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now and hereafter...
As now and hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Didn't mean to trip you up there, guys.
I didn't mean to mess you up.
Thank you. There's some folks here, Mike, you're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, sir.
Good license, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yes, ma'am.
At this time, we have a public forum for anyone who would like to speak on an agenda item. Do we have any takers? Everybody's leaving? Seeing none, we will move on. Next up is approval of the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Sporer.
Bannister and Hopkins, any discussion on this item? Okay. All in favor, say yes. Opposed, no. Mandy, call the roll, please.
DeAnstruck.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Sporer.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion carried. At this time, we have a public hearing on a rezoning application for 414 Liberty Street. Mike, would you fill us in, please?
Yes, Councilmember DeYoung may be happy to do so. And this request comes to us this evening from the state of Mr. Tim Sadler. And specifically, we have the rezoning application for 414 Liberty Street. The rezoning request that we're entertaining this evening is a rezoning from the current institutional zoning to R1C. And the subject property that we have located here at 414 Liberty Street is this purple highlighted area up here to orientate the council to the location of this Trinity Church that is located right up here. So let's go ahead, please. Mandy? Okay. What we have listed on this slide is really a description of the R1C. And it's again a residential district right here. And what we, and typically what you find in comparison of R1C in comparison to a typical R1 is typically just smaller lots are associated with R1C on it as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. The only time we have a rezoning request is the council's aware. We always look at the city's comprehensive plan. And in this case, the future use land map of comprehensive plan targets this area for low density residential right here. So this rezoning request does align with the city's comprehensive plan. And Councilmember DeYoung, it is important to note, the planning and zoning commission unanimously approved this rezoning request on the 3rd July 25th meeting. And it is finally, I'd also like to mention that the applicant has requested waiver at the second and third readings of this ordinance. And with that, that concludes the staff presentation. We will now have the answering questions the council may have on this item.
Thank you, Mike. Mandy, are there any written comments?
Just the two that are already in the...
Any oral comments on this? I think in case you haven't picked it up, it's important to note that errors are trying to wrap up in the state here. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Some... Sporer.
Hopkins and Sporer. All in favor, vote yes. Opposed, no. Clerk call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Sporer.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
DeAnstruck.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion carried. We'll move on to ordinance number 1014 entitled, "An Ordinance Amending the Zoning Ordinance of the City of Pella, Iowa by amending the boundaries of the neo-traditional single-family residential district to include the property legally described in Exhibit A and directing the planning and zoning director to note the ordinance number and date of this change on the official zoning map." This would be first reading. Anything further, Mike?
No, sir.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Sporer.
Sporer and Hopkins, any last minute discussion?
The only thing, this is very technical. Section 1 says the property was owned by Tim Sadler. Should that be the, by the estate of Timothy Sadler?
The ordinance was reviewed by Christine and she was, I went to the wording, so...
She doesn't, he doesn't own it.
I can certainly follow up with her. She did review the ordinance. I have a question around that.
I, I think it might be worthwhile because technically, I think the ownership has shifted. What do you think, Mike? I mean, I don't want to be too technical, but...
Let's look at the rezoning application on it. We signed the rezoning application.
Or we could simply amend the motion upon approval of...
It says the state of...
...the county.
It says the state of Tim Sadler is the owner on the application now.
We can...
Or can we just amend, like I said, let's get it...
We can make any necessary amendments from, from the, to address the ordinance if it needs to be so.
So does the president made the motion, have to make the amendment, or could...
No, we'll just handle it.
I'd make a motion that we, we change the, on section 1 from Timothy Sadler to the estate of Timothy Sadler to match the application.
Some, or Sporer.
Support Hopkins. So we will vote first on the amendment and then on the amended motion. All in favor, vote yes. Opposed, no. Clerk call the roll.
DeAnstruck.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Sporer.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Okay, the amendment passes. Do we have a motion to approve?
Before we do so, the cover of the plan is in the blue here. There's obviously mostly institutional zoning around one R1C lot there to the east. Is the cover of the plan newer than that one R1C lot? Or it seems to be somewhat habitual if we're going the other direction of what I'm surrounding. Obviously, there's a big institution on the south and potentially expand the institution on the north. And that, it's a neat old house, it's worth saving lives. Spot zoning is something I know you guys have talked about a lot before.
And, Mandy, if we can please go back to slide number five. And Councilmember Carlstone, that's an excellent point, and I failed to mention it during my presentation, and I apologize for this. We do review these requests for spot zoning. And in this particular case, what we're looking for is zoning that's inconsistent with the request. The property is currently zoned institutional. We have R1C, which I've said, and then there's also R1C over here. So from a strict spot zoning standpoint, there's R1C in the, in the median adjacent, that is adjacent and abutting to the property. And when we had that, and it, we didn't, for our review, we did not note any spot zoning issues with this request. And Mandy, let's go ahead, please, to the next slide. And so to complete our review, what we looked at was the future use land map. And the future use land map was filed in 2014. The city's zoning, as we know in its current version, is probably somewhere right around the latest code, zoning code was adopted in 2002. And my hunch is that that may prelate the future use land map, which does identify the property for residential use.
Wait.
So to get, get this back on the floor, we have a motion, place this on first reading. Some, Hopkins, Sporer, any further comment about zoning? Hearing none. All in favor, say yes. Opposed, no. Clerk call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Sporer.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
DeAnstruck.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed.
I'll make a motion to waive the second and third readings of the ordinance as amended.
Sporer.
Bannister, Sporer, discussion? All in favor, say yes. Opposed, no. Clerk call the roll.
DeAnstruck.
Yes.
Sporer.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. And a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Sporer. Sporer and Hopkins. All in favor, say yes. Opposed, no. Clerk call the roll.
Sporer.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
DeAnstruck.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. This time, we would like to move on into the future and proclaim October 31st as Beggars' Night in Pella. Put that one on your calendar. At this time, we have the privilege of having a presentation from Missouri River Energy Services.
Yeah, Councilmember DeYoung, I think we need to schedule it, have a vote on the Beggars' Night.
Oh, really?
Got a motion, yep.
I can't just say, yes, we're gonna do this? Okay, we need a vote, we need a motion.
So moved.
Support.
Hopkins and Sporer. And has anybody opposed? In that case, all in favor, vote yes. Opposed, no. Clerk call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Sporer.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
DeAnstruck.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Complete, your office. Go right ahead, Joni, and welcome.
All right, thank you so much. I'm Joni Livingston. I'm the Vice President of Member Services and Communications for Missouri River Energy Services. So thank you for having me tonight. I'd like to tell you a little bit about Missouri River Energy and our partnership with the City of Pella. I know that, I know some of you, but I haven't met everyone on the council because it's been a while since I've been here. Mandy and I were talking about it, it was probably right before COVID yet. So it's been a while. I'd like to start by telling you a little bit about Missouri River Energy and our partnership with Pella. We are your wholesale power provider, and we also provide a lot of other energy services, some of which you partake in and some of which are optional. We, our structure is that we are a joint action agency. And that means that we were formed by our members and were owned by our members. So Pella is an owner of Missouri River Energy. And we only serve municipal utilities. We have 61 members in four states. Those are Iowa, Minnesota, North Dakota, and South Dakota. And each one of those owns their, each one of those communities owns their municipal utility. We are not-for-profit, just like our membered utilities are not-for-profit. And then to kind of give you a little bit of an idea about our size, our annual operating budget is right around $300 million. And we have about 122 full-time and part-time staff members. About 106 of those are, are full-time. Some are in the field, some are in our office in Sioux Falls, South Dakota. And we have a 12-member Board of Directors. And in Iowa, your representatives currently on our board are Roarid Weiss from Dennison, Iowa, Jim Hoy from Rock Rapids, and Murray Halstein from Sioux Center. And if you would. So Pella has been a member of Missouri River Energy since 2011. So you're not our newest member, but almost. Most of our members joined Missouri River back in the early 70s to mid 70s. And that's because many of our members have an allocation of hydro power from Western Area Power Administration. Unfortunately, Western Area Power didn't come this far east, I don't think. So you didn't have that opportunity. But we have one new member, Wilmer, Minnesota, who just joined about three years ago. So you're no longer the newest. Thank you. So why did these communities form Missouri River in the first place? Well, one of the primary benefits of working together with other utilities is to get economies of scale. And originally, that meant getting economies of scale, working together on power supply issues. It's turned into transmission issues and many other services since then. We have, our members share resources, not only power supply resources, but also, you know, things like, we have a marketing campaign called "The Value of Public Power," where we provide materials for you to use as billstuffers or social media to talk about the value of your local utility here in Pella. And we have legislative folks, we have three legislative liaisons on our staff. And they work, for example, with IMU to bring the concerns and of municipal utilities forward. So that gives you a larger voice with legislators and also with regulators as well. We have lots of mutually beneficial services, some are opt-in, and I'm going to talk about those a little bit briefly later. But we believe that Missouri River members are really in a great position to meet future challenges together. You don't have to do it on your own. We've got, you know, a lot of people and a lot of support to not only help you serve your customers better, but hopefully reduce your risks and your costs as well. All right, Mandy?
Thank you.
I'm going to mention Western Minnesota Municipal Power Agency because I just want you to have an understanding of, of who that is and what that is. They are a, I shouldn't really say a sister organization to Missouri River Energy, but they are associated very closely with us. So we were formed by municipal utilities in, in northwestern Iowa originally. And when we came to do our first power project, which was a coal plant in Wheatland, Wyoming, we were not able to finance being formed under the laws of Iowa because we had members in four states, not just in Iowa. So Iowa law did not permit us to do that. We kind of looked at the laws of the other three states, and Minnesota had the most favorable laws to do financing for Missouri River Energy and our members. So we formed another joint action agency called Western Minnesota Municipal Power Agency. And now that is, all the, all of our members in Minnesota belong to that agency. And there's a seven-member board that works in conjunction with the Missouri River Board. And they do all the financing for any generation projects and any transmission projects. They even own our building in Sioux Falls. So Western Minnesota is the actual owner of the Red Rock Hydro Project, for example, even though Missouri River operates it. And we are the only customer of Western Minnesota. So they only work with Missouri River on behalf of our members. They don't provide financing for anyone else. They have really good bond ratings in the double A categories with both movies and Fitch, so they're a very financially sound organization. And we work with them through our administrative services agreement. All right, so how Missouri River and Western Minnesota work with the City of Pella is through a power supply agreement. And these power supply agreements that we have with our members are very, they have a very long term. So you can see that the term is currently through January 1st of 2057. We just extended that term in 2016. The reason we have such a long term for our power supply contracts is that when we bond for projects like the Red Rock Hydro Project that we did in 2016, when that's what we were preparing for, those bonds are typically 30 years or more. And so our power supply agreement with you and with our other members is the security for our bonds on each one of those assets. So all of our members, including Pella, did extend their contracts through 2057. So we very much appreciate that, and that's why the Red Rock Hydro Project was able to be built. One of the things that we changed in our contract when we did that update in 2016, previously, you bought all of your power from Missouri River Energy. And now we have a clause in our power supply contract in case you have customers that you would like to serve with a renewable project, like a solar project, you can self-supply or self-generate renewable energy that would constitute up to 5% of the power that you buy from us. So that, we, we wanted to encourage or allow at least any community solar interest in our membership. So your power supply bill with us is next. And you probably see that power supply bill each month when you approve bills. And I just wanted to kind of explain that that isn't just your Missouri River power supply that you get from us. It also includes your transmission costs to, to deliver the power here to Pella. And that is done through the Mid-Continent Independent System Operator, that's MISO. And they are the entity, they're called Regional Transmission Organization. They're the entity that oversees the reliability of the grid. And they call upon generators to run as needed every day and every hour and every five minutes, actually. So those bills are combined. We don't have any markup on the MISO transmission bill at all. That's just a pass-through. And all of the members, including Pella and everyone, all pay the same rate for power supply from Missouri River Energy. We were fortunate, we have had some, you know, really good financial years. And in 2019, we had a 3% rate decrease. And this year, starting January 1st of this year, we had a 5% rate decrease. So very fortunate to have that. We are just working on our budget process right now, but we are predicting that our rates will be stable, they will not change for 2023. We had, we had hoped that we could project longer out than that, but the, the energy market has been more volatile lately than in previous years. So we're just saying 2023, we're quite confident, stable rates. All right, so something new that Missouri River is doing in, starting in 2023, is we're introducing wholesale time of use rates. And that would mean that during certain times of the day, when everybody is using power at the same time during your peak times, power is going to be higher priced. And then overnight, when very few people are using it, that will be when the power is the cheapest. And then, you know, mornings and later evenings, afternoons, you know, depending on what the prices are, your power is going to be kind of mid-priced, you might say. So we've tried to talk about this and kind of let members know that this is coming for actually several years. Because if you want to pass those types of, type of rates along to your customers, it takes some metering to do that, and it takes, you got to make sure your billing program will do it. So it, it takes some time to do that on the retail side of things. So we've been just kind of preparing for this. And as we did it, we, we changed those rates so that it will be revenue neutral for MRES. When we do this time of use rate, it will only affect the energy portion of your bill. And the demand side, we're going to lower that price a little bit. So it should be revenue neutral for Missouri River, and it's very little change for most of our members. For Pella, you should probably see a 0.1% increase based on your previous usage. So very little change. And we did that purposefully. We want to get people used to seeing what a time of use bill looks like and how time of use works. We didn't want that to make any impact on your costs at first. The reason you might want to think about giving, passing those costs along, or passing those rates along, I should say, to your customers, is that it gives them the opportunity to actually save money. If they can shift some of their usage off of your peak time, which, I didn't look this up, Mike, but typically, it's 4:00 in the afternoon till 8:00 at night. That would be your highest price time. Really, both summer and winter, it's usually in that neighborhood. We would, you know, we would work with you to find out exactly what those rates should look like. But if they can shift some of their usage off, they would actually, actually save money with these rates. And for your larger commercial and industrial customers too, depending on, depending on their processes and, and how they can, you know, change things around or, or shift things to later, it might make a big difference for them as well. That's something we could look at with you if you're interested. All right. So we have been fortunate in the last year and a half or so to be able to provide a couple of refunds to the City of Pella. And actually, this is, it's getting to be a little bit farther out now. This first refund, the member refund that we're talking about, you received in December of 2020. And what happened was, you know, when COVID hit and everybody kind of shut down, we did have less sales, so that reduced our revenues. However, our expenses were down even more than our revenues. And we ended up with quite a good surplus at the end of the year in 2020. And so we refunded each of our members 10% of your cost of your power supply for the previous year. And for Pella, that was, you know, almost $1.2 million. So we're very happy to do that for our members. Had never been done in the 23 years that I've been there before, so. Then in May of 2021, we finally settled a, a case that we had with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, FER. And this case was about transmission charges that we believed our, our members were being overcharged for. It was a dispute that we were having with several other utilities on the way things were calculated. And after six years of this case, we finally won it. And we were able to refund our members the amount that they had overpaid. So with that, that was about $77,000. And so I'm very happy to share that. It was about one, almost $1.3 million that we were able to give back to our members. It was about one, almost $1.3 million that we were able to give back to our members. And very, very happy to do that for Pella. All right, so this is just a map of our power supply resources. So you can see, I'm sure that you are so aware of the Red Rock Project, which is really new to us and it's down there, but there's lots of other resources that serve our members. So we have a very diverse supply, power supply, and diverse not only in the types of fuel it is, but also where they're located. And we think this kind of mitigates our risk and helps, helps us better manage costs. We are working all the time towards cleaner and more renewable power supply and hence the Red Rock Project. But just wanted to give you an overview of that. Of course, our newest project is the Red Rock Project. And that went commercial, it went into commercial operation in June of 2021. It was Murphy's Law the whole way through building this project because as we were building it and, you know, building platforms in the water and working in the water, of course, we had several flood events during the construction of the project that really slowed it down. It actually slowed down things about two years. And we would have to stop construction on the intake side or the lake side of the project several times. And then, of course, as soon as it was done and we went operational, we had to do a bunch of testing. And that's just when a drought hit, you might know. So that delayed our testing and delayed commercial operation for a while. We're still really not completely out of that drought, and I'll tell you a little bit more about that in a minute. But it was such an exciting project, and we really appreciate all the support that the city of Pella gave us and the county of Marion County. I mean, it was absolutely tremendous, and we couldn't have picked a better slot, to put it. So we, I said that we ran about two years over, and our final cost came in at about 4.6% over budget, which we were really pleased with that. You know, it, we really felt it could have been a lot worse, so that wasn't too bad. Mandy, I do have just one more picture there. And Vern gave me, Vern Cochran is our, our plant manager out at the Red Rock site. And so I asked him just for some specifics. This year, we've had really good operations there for starting out and for, we've had quite a bit of low water in the Des Moines River watershed. But we've had at least one unit on for 197 out of 228 days. So it's been operating 197 days this year. We had 31 days that it's been offline due to low water. And it's, it's the Corps of Engineers who regulates how much water we get. We, we don't get to choose that. They, they operate it for their regular flood control activities and for whatever other purposes that they need to operate it for. So we just take what they can give us. We had 49 of those days we're operating both units at full capacity. And so we have had either one unit on, but many times we've had both units on and operating at full capacity, which is great. Now, you might know that, we're going to have tours on Thursday of this week for members, and, and you guys are invited if you'd like to come. But I also invite you to come anytime. Vern will, will schedule a tour with you anytime you'd like. And last Thursday, we had to shut down because we ran out of water. Now, they might, the Corps may let us run it on Thursday for the tours, we're not sure yet. They may let us run it for a few hours, anyone. On June 2nd, we had our first dam safety inspection by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. They will inspect the dam for safety every now and then because it's really important that the dam is not disturbed or breached. And everything came through with flying colors, no concerns, no findings on that. So that was great. We have two, two operators out there, and they do pretty consistent maintenance all the time. They had 96 scheduled preventive maintenance activities that they've already done this year. They had 36 scheduled regulatory checkups. And then they had 21 unscheduled items that they fixed. So that's a little bit about how the Red Rock Project is doing. We're still extremely excited about it, it's a great project. I've got a few more slides I want to talk about, but I'll stop there to ask if you've got questions about Red Rock. Okay.
Any questions?
What happens when the dam is silted full?
I'm sorry, I'm going to cut out, I, I hear really badly.
I'm not bad, Jim, but if you excuse, what happens when the dam's silted full?
Silted full? Well, that's a good question. I don't know, I, I think that that, the dam silting and all of that, I think is a Corps of Engineers issue. And, you know, we work very closely with the Corps, but I've never heard that that is an immediate concern or a concern that has been brought up, that I've heard. But I think it's a question for the Corps of Engineers, because I, I think that's in their ballpark.
Joni, I'd like to also state that that was looked at extensively during the planning for Red Rock as well. And so earlier on that, that was taken into consideration. Also keep in mind, it's more silting than they're actually raising the water level, raising the head level, on it which ultimately could lead to more production for their Red Rock Hydro Electric Facility as well.
Thank you, Mike, I, I wasn't even aware of that, so I appreciate that. All right, a few more slides here. We, we are very conscious of trying to be more carbon-free and more, you know, producing clean energy and renewable energy. And each year, we provide our members with a snapshot of how your carbon-free and renewable energy mix, you know, has looked for the previous year. So for 2021, Pella's carbon-free energy here was 58%, and your renewable energy was 8% of your overall mix. And keep in mind now, in 2021, the Red Rock only ran from June 21st, I think it was, through the end of the year. And then we've got some wind in, in our portfolio and in yours as well. So that made up the rest of it. So I think Red Rock was only about, about 1%? It was only about 1% of your overall power supply last year from Red Rock. But that should be better going into the future as well. We expect that Red Rock will provide, for our membership entirely, our overall power supply mix, it'll be about 5% of our total power supply mix for all the members. All right, I'm not really going to go, I've got a couple slides here about all the various energy services that we provide, and I'm, I'm not going to go through those, I'm just going to talk about one at the end. But you'll be able to see from this slide, and then Mandy, if you want to go to the next one even, we've got really a lot of things that you can take advantage of. And our newest is probably cybersecurity services, where we're now offering to do a cybersecurity assessment for our members. And another new one is billing technology, because as I mentioned with time of use rates, a lot of our members' billing systems could not bill time of use. So we're, we've worked with Tyler Technologies and we're offering a, a discounted price on billing upgrade. All right, one other thing that I would like to talk about is our AMI program. And AMI is Advanced Metering Infrastructure. This is also one of the things that is needed to be in place for time of use rates. But there's a ton of other benefits that come with AMI metering. And Mike had mentioned to me that you guys are thinking about doing this in a couple of years. So I thought it would be good to maybe show you some of the benefits you could get with an AMI system. The first one there is, is different interval meter data, which means that you can, right now, you may bill your customers, you know, getting one meter reading per month. Is that right, Mike? One meter reading per month. So, you know, you're getting a month's worth of, of information, but it's not detailed. So for some of your customers, like maybe Pella and Vermeer, they could get, maybe they want 15 minutes, they want to know how much they're using, how much their demand is and how much their energy is. You could get readings from them every 15 minutes if you wanted to, or every hour on a residential, on a residential customer. And that can give them and you a lot more insight into how they're using energy so that they can control it better and they can manage their energy usage and their costs better. On-demand reading of electric meters, that would be used like if, if somebody is moving and they, they're, maybe they're moving out of town and you want to read their bill and just give them a final bill right there while, you know, while they're waiting. You can read those meters just with the push of a button at any time. Or if somebody has a high bill and you want to double-check if it's accurate, you can just do that with a push of a button. So this technology really reduces misreads or, you know, having to estimate bills, that sort of thing. It gives you the ability to do remote connects and disconnects when people are moving in and out. If you, you know, disconnect between, between customers or if there's a, a customer that hasn't paid their bill and you need to disconnect, that's really a safety issue for many of our members. They, you know, sending somebody out to disconnect a meter can sometimes be a safety issue. Ability to use time of use and dynamic pricing and accurate metering of electric vehicles as they come, become more popular, you're going to want to encourage them to be charged overnight and not during your peak times. And this can give you and the customer insight into how that works. And actually, the AMI meter could even, you know, show the customer how much they're paying, you know, at one hour versus another. Outage restoration and notification. When you have these electronic meters, you can see if there's a power outage, you can see exactly what meters are off. And when you restore the power, you can see if anybody is still out of power that you haven't gotten to. And then on the customer side of things, it, it's more accurate billing for them. You don't have to access their property. They can get a lot of better customer information. I kind of have these out of order here, but for example, you can immediately determine a water leak or high electric usage. You can determine if there's voltage issues or a meter is high temperature. You may have heard of meters starting on fire at times, and you would be able to detect that early with this. You might be able to offer new payment options, such as a prepaid bill if some customers prefer to do that. And just the ability for customers to view and manage their electric costs and their, you know, really understand when they're using power and be able to manage that. With, if you would, you know, work with MRES on this, we have done a thorough RFP of systems. And so one benefit for members, I guess, is that you wouldn't have to issue an RFP unless you wanted to, because it's, they've been well-vetted already. All right, so that is all I have, but I would be happy to answer questions if anybody has them.
Joni, I'd just like to add, when we talk about AMI, it's also important to note that with time of use metering would allow our consumers to be, make better choices on their consumption of energy. And overall, that has a lot of benefits for the city of Pella. And I may be a little bit off on this, but when we look at our energy bill, the demand portion is somewhere between 40 to 50% of our total energy cost on this. So anything that the city can do to shape its peak load could have significant savings for our community, and that's one of the real benefits to AMI on it as well. So again, it's been very beneficial for the city to be a part of Missouri River. From our standpoint, AMI is just one thing that they've already vetted the systems for us, that's a tremendous value for the city of Pella. But I would also like to say our partnership with Missouri River is extremely beneficial, both in the power supply, power supply planning for the community as well as the transmission. Those are extremely complex activities for the city, and we're very fortunate to have the experts at Missouri River handling those for us.
And that's definitely mutual. We feel like you guys are great partners and we're really happy to have you as members.
One more question here.
Pella Generating Plant, do you guys own that now? Diesel plant?
No, we don't own it, but we contract for the output of it. So we use it, and through a contract with the city, we use it as a generating resource when MISO requires that, that generator run. So we've kind of dedicated it to our entire membership to run when MISO calls upon it, and we, we pay the city a payment for that every month. So we don't own it, you own it, but we contract for it.
How often do you use it?
You know, I think it's ran several times this summer, hasn't it?
That is correct, yes.
Yeah. MISO has been in a situation where they have, they have said that there's an elevated risk of energy shortages this year. And that's really due to plants being either down for maintenance or taking off, taken offline that would fill in the gaps when the wind isn't blowing or the sun isn't shining. You know, we've got a lot of intermittent resources in the area, in the, in the entire region. But when it's a hot day and the wind dies down, it's mostly wind that affects, you know, this, then we need to bring on all these other resources. And when we have to call upon a diesel unit, like here in Pella, you know that they're getting really low on their resources. And we've ran quite a few resources this year. I think we're kind of done with that now, with some cooler weather here. So, yeah, we, it's, we've ran it more this year than previous years.
Would it be wise for the city to sell it?
Right now, we do have a contract with Missouri River, and maybe Corey, if you can help me out on this, I believe, just for the capacity and ability to utilize it, we receive right around $800,000 per year. In addition, we run it to support the transmission system, we're also reimbursed for our costs, and we are allowed a small profit margin on our energy sales to support the transmission system.
And I do think, because these units are really important to Missouri River Energy, we are looking at increasing the price that we pay to our members who own these generators. And I think that's going to come out as part of our budget process, and will probably start sometime next year when we're even going to increase that price. Because it's really important to us that these units are available and can run when the system needs them. So I don't have any details on that, but I know that we're in discussions on that.
How much money does the city make off of the, the generating plant, selling it, giving MISO?
We started, we'd have to go back with the capacity payments, we can get that information, but it's in our contract, and we joined Missouri River in 2011. And I believe the capacity payments for the, the diesel plant started shortly afterwards on that as well, so it's been in place since 2011.
You've got a ballpark figure, what you guys are making off that?
Keys, outside of what we have, about $800,000 per year is what we receive from our capacity payment, plus the small profit margin, what we do receive off the, the energy sales as well.
So no?
As far as the total revenue we, we've received, we'd have to pull that, that number, but it's roughly about $800,000 per year we receive just for capacity payments.
That's, that's the, that's the whole bill, right? So what's the problem of that, what percentage?
$800,000, that's the capacity payments that we receive from Missouri River to have the capacity online and be able to use as a transmission resource.
Does the fuel price affect that profit margin?
What's that?
No, they're two separate things. The payment we receive from Missouri River of $800,000 per year is just the ability to use our capacity in case they're needed for the transmission system. If we operate it, then we receive a cost per megawatt hour on top of that. So $800,000 comes to the city, just as pure capacity. If we operate it, we receive additional income on top of that, so we cover our costs that way as well. So overall, we view the capacity payments as an extremely, I'd say, good arrangement for the city of Pella.
And Mike, just a rough estimate, it's about $7 million from 2020 to FY20.
Where do those funds go?
They're in the electric utility, they're part of the electric utilities budget that we have.
What's, what's the biggest angst that the border of Missouri River has right now? Big picture question, I know, but what, what, what is the big, their biggest issues they're facing right now?
So one of the biggest things that we're looking at is another hydro project called the Gregory County Pump Hydro Storage Project. And this would be a pump storage, so it's not like a powerhouse like here at Red Rock. It would be a reservoir on top of a bluff in south central South Dakota. So we would have to build a reservoir, and then we would pump water out of the Missouri River to fill the reservoir, and we would do that typically when prices are low, which is when the wind is blowing, and there's plenty of wind resources, then we would pump water up. And this is really for reliability. We would pump water up to the reservoir, and when the wind dies down, and on those hot, hot summer days or cold winter days especially, but we would run it whenever it's economical. But then we would have that as capacity, so it would be like another generating plant. That, really, it's more like a big battery. We would store the water in the upper reservoir and let it down when the wind isn't blowing and there aren't sufficient resources. So this is a huge project we're looking at, and, and doing a lot of study on it. We're going to be studying it for the next three years probably, before we can make a decision whether to go forward. And we are partnering with Mid-American Energy. We have this study permit, or it's in the name of Western Minnesota Municipal Power Agency. We have the study permit, so we kind of own the project to study it, but we needed a big partner. And so Mid-American has chosen to partner with us, and, but we're just studying it. Don't know if it's going to go forward or not, and it's a huge project.
Thank you.
This would be one of the first in the United States, wouldn't it?
Not one of the first, there's about 43 other pump storage projects, but none of them have been built for a while, and reliability now to, to work with intermittent resources, that is the driving force of building new pump storage. So there are several that are being looked at across the United States.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you so much, really appreciate it.
Appreciate you coming by.
I have a question for you, ma'am. Do you guys own your own wind generators?
So we own a few of our own wind generators. We have a small project near Worthington, Minnesota. We have a project out by Marshall, Minnesota. And those two are probably about 25 megawatts. The rest of it, which we have about just under 90 megawatts of wind altogether, we have purchase power agreements for all the rest of that wind, like we do with the wind that Pella owns. So that's the hand-held project, right?
That's correct.
So we have purchase power agreements, and part of the reason for that is we can't get the tax credits for building wind projects, and so we let somebody else build them who can get those tax credits, and then we purchase the energy out of that. So.
So the energy you've purchased from wind, is that more expensive from other sources? Or which, how does that compare to other sources that you purchase from?
That's a good question, and I, I used to know the answer to this. You know, since we're only purchasing the energy out of those, I'm not sure, when you add in the cost of bill to wind turbine nowadays, I'm not sure how those costs compare. But I think when, when the energy is sold into the market, they bid it in at zero cost for energy. They get paid more than, more than that in the market, but because of their tax credits, they don't even have to bid in the full price of building a wind turbine. So the wind is always used first in the market, like MISO will always call upon wind first to run, because they bid it in at zero fuel cost. So when the wind is blowing, that is the primary energy that everyone is using. Red Rocket and hydro projects are also very low-cost, and, and they get to run, you know, as much as possible. The market starts with the cheapest resource possible. That comes online when more, when more energy is needed, they just keep bringing on the next most expensive generator, until we get up to even like the diesel generators like here in town. That's probably one of the most expensive ones to run, so that comes on last, if that makes sense. The energy market works the opposite of other markets. You know, your, other markets try to get the highest price, the energy market brings on the lowest-priced resource, always, and then the next, next highest price, and so on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time, thank you.
Okay, we will turn our attention to a resolution, number 6480, a resolution making award of contract for the apron expansion project at the Pella Municipal Airport. Mike, can you fill us in?
Yes, Councilmember DeYoung, actually, I'd like to refer everyone's attention to the big board for a presentation on the item. And as Councilmember DeYoung stated, what this resolution would do is would award the apron expansion project for the Pella Municipal Airport. And just a little bit of background on the apron expansion, what we're looking to do is expand the apron of the Pella Municipal Airport by about 150 feet, width by 530 feet, and length on this entire one. Right here, what we have up here. So Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, as per the total cost of the contract, we're looking at just under $779,000, and this resolution would award the contract to Pella Concrete. Now, if Council were to approve this resolution tonight, the contract would take approximately, the job is estimated to take approximately 45 working days to complete. So with authorization given very soon afterwards, we anticipate that this project would hopefully be completed by the time snow starts flying this year as well. So, Councilmember DeYoung, we are recommending approval of the resolution, which awards the project contract to Pella Concrete in amount of $778,882.75. And with that, that does conclude the staff presentation. DeMong, if you have any answer to any questions the council may have on this item.
Motion to get started?
Some move, sport?
Banstra and Hopkins, is there any discussion questions? Nothing. In that case, any questions out there? And Mandy, all those in favor, yes, opposed, no? Clerk call the roll?
Deanshaw?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Sporer?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion carried. We'll move on to ordinance 1015, and ordinance amending the city code of the city of Pella, Iowa, Chapter 9 Parking Regulation. Always fun. Please, Mike?
I guess Councilmember DeYoung, and as Councilmember DeYoung stated, what this ordinance would do, it would remove the parking on the north side of the 700 block of P Street. It is important to note that we did discuss this with the council on August 2nd of this year, but we do have the highlighted area as far as removal of parking on the 700 block. So this is the new south main development here. What this ordinance would do is remove the parking on the 700 block of, north side of the 700 block of P Street as well. And Councilmember DeYoung, we are recommending approval of the ordinance as submitted this evening.
Okay. We have a motion to place this on first reading?
Support.
Hopkins, sport, discussion? Quiet room. Okay, on favor, vote yes, opposed, no? Clerk call the roll?
Hopkins?
Yes.
Sporer?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Deanshaw?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I think it doesn't hurt to get this happen as soon as possible, so I'm going to make a motion to waive the second, third readings of this.
Sport.
Here we have a motion, Banstra and Sporer, to move ahead, waive second and third reading, and further discussion. Comment? Hearing none, all in favor, vote yes, opposed, no? Clerk call the roll?
Deanshaw?
Yes.
Sporer?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Go to adopt?
Sport.
Hopkins and Sporer, last chance, discussion, no? All in favor, vote yes, opposed, no? Clerk call the roll?
Hopkins?
Yes.
Sporer?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Deanshaw?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Carried. Now, is the time? Bills. Abstract of Bills, number 2109. We have a motion for approval.
Some move?
Sport.
Hopkins and Sporer, any question on any of the items? Hearing none, all in favor, vote yes, opposed, no? Clerk call the roll?
Hopkins?
Yes.
Sporer?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Deanshaw?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Carried. Now, an opportunity for open forum. Does anyone wish to speak to the council? See none. We will entertain a motion to move into closed session. That would be in conjunction with Iowa Code, Chapter 2125, want see, discussing strategy with council on matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent. Hopkins? You may move.
Support.
Hopkins, support by sport, any questions, discussion? All in favor, vote yes, opposed, no? Clerk call the roll?
Hopkins?
Yes.
Sporer?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Deanshaw?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Carried. Are we staying here? Yeah. Okay. Respect, we might ask you to clear the room.
Motion to adjourn. Deanshaw?
Yes.
Sporer?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?